It's four o'clock and we will start the regular city meeting.
Hilda, will you please do roco?
Mayor President Hernandez, Commissioner Lázaro Juárez.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
And Commissioner Ilsa Flores.
Present.
We do have a quorum.
Move to approve absent members.
Second.
First and second, all those favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Luis, will you please lead us in the pledge allegiance and invocation? Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. God, we come to you humbly asking for your guidance. In prayer, we ask that you listen to our unified voice so that the city's community and business affairs reach a beneficial outcome for all concerned. Remind us to keep an open mind and to always be, have a sense of community with a pro-business attitude in order to do right by all. We pray for this in your name. Amen. Thank you, Luis. We do have two proclamations. A proclamation proclaiming National Day of Remembrance, a day for murder victims. And I believe Robert is here to say a few words.
Hi, Robert.
I'm from here. Are you, members of the committee, the commission? Thank you for having me here. My name is Robert Garcia. On behalf of my families in the Rio Grande Valley, family of friends of murdered children. Thirty-eight years ago, which is September thirteenth of two thousand and eleven, my brother was murdered in Huntington, Texas. Shot twice, possible three times during, he was taking a shower. It was a murder-suicide out of Huntington. And the grief of helping my eighty-year-old parents third grade education, going through the criminal justice and probate court, traveling all the way from Rio Grande to Grantsville was very hectic. And every time they would go to court or talk to law enforcement, they would come out crying, crying even more. And one time I tell them what's going on. I says, "Well, I don't understand what they're trying to tell me." Their liaison there, their people, they come and talk to me. I don't understand. They use words that, "I have third grade education. I'm not going to be able to understand." So at that point, once all the crime scene and the viewing of three days, a mourning and nine days, a rosary, and my brother being a mentor in my growing up and pushed me for college. I love this particular verse or, or saying that grief is the last act of love we can give to those we love. Where there is deep grief, there's always great love. And as a mentor, and I told my parents, in particular, my mom, that I know she's looking down from heaven. Four days, four years after my brother was murdered, she went down to heaven. And I can still make her proud and tell her, "Mom, promise Cat, I will continue the fight of helping families that need and seek justice and advocacy in the court and beyond." And part of this is to come before you and say, "Hey, commissioners, and I got through the city, Hidalgo County Commissioners Court, McAllen, and Mission is still pending, and certainly Edinburgh. You have been very gracious to our group and we thank you from the bottom of our heart. You have demonstrated leadership in understanding and helping." We have about fifteen families in the city of FAR. In particular, we went to, the jury got ninety-nine years, a case out of Mescaut Street Drive in North. And in July the eighteenth, the jury gave ninety-nine years, which means Ms. Levillada right here to my right. And constantly, the grief of the mothers is very painful and, and I just want you all know that your gratitude is welcome and appreciation for us to be doing this, what we do. And I challenge the community throughout Hidalgo County to come and visit us. We hear about mass shootings, we hear about school shootings. You know, two-hundred-and-forty-six lives have been murdered since my brother's death. Only eight years there about. Out of those two-hundred-and-forty-six lives, we're talking about two-thousand-four-hundred people that stay behind, just like we do. And so it's important that you all can come and say hi and see the altars when we put there on Wednesday and see, unfortunately, it's so emotional all day long because it's our annual remembrance. So we come out with a resolution. And the resolution says, "Promise Cat, Mom, the Voice Resolution. They're about thirteen. I will." I'm not going to read all of them. I'm going to go back to the very last one. It says, "I will, I will be the voice and courageously work with the strength of God, our Lord Jesus Christ, to fulfill, continue, and renew this resolution. As long as I breathe, we will remember them all for his glory." So we are, where are the family and friends of murdered children? Who will join us? Who will stand up with us and be the voice of our loved ones on September twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen, at the FAR Events Center? On behalf of my group, all the mothers and fathers that are here, thank you for the opportunity to continue the partnership and hearing us on September twenty-fifth and in particular this population. I appreciate you all.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you. On behalf of the mayor, myself, and the rest of the commission, we'd like to, our deepest condolences to all the families. At this time, I'm going to read a proclamation. Whereas the National Parents of Murdered Children established September twenty-fifth as the National Day of Remembrance for murder victims as a result of unanimously passed resolutions by the U.S. Senate on October sixth, two thousand and seven, and the U.S. House of Representatives on May fourteenth, two thousand and seven. And whereas POMC believes that honoring the memory of victims who have been killed by violence and acknowledging the resulting long-term trauma for families and communities in Texas and the nation is an essential way of promoting public awareness and remembering our loved ones. And whereas in two thousand and eighteen, there were an estimated seventeen thousand homicides nationwide, of which the Rio Grande Valley experienced forty-two homicides and over four-hundred-and-twenty close relatives were affected, far higher than the number of direct homicide victims. And whereas survivors of homicide victims transformed their plan, their pain and anger into power and action by honoring the memory of their loved ones impacted by homicide. Through leadership, grief support, and advocacy, survivors are reducing violence and promoting prevention and policy change on a local, state, and national level. And whereas we urge all the citizens of FAR and Hidalgo County to join us for the seventh annual Candlelight Vigil, together we climb the mountain to the peak of hope, to be held at the FAR Events Center from six P.M. to nine P.M. and take cognizance of this event and participate faithfully in its observance. Now therefore, I, Bobby Carrillo, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of FAR, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor and the city commission, do hereby proclaim the twenty-fifth day of September, two thousand and nineteen, as National Day of Remembrance for Murder Victims. A witness whereof, I have unto you set my hand and cause the seal of the City of FAR to be affixed on the nineteenth day of September, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you so much for sharing with us.
All right, moving on to the second proclamation, a proclamation proclaiming Manufacturing Day. Mike? Long time no see.
Good afternoon, City Council. For the record, Karina Lopez, Business Retention and Expansion Manager for the FAR EDC. With me, I also have Ms. Belinda Vargas. She is the PSJA ISD Career and Technical Education and Business Partnership Coordinator for PSJA. And of course, I have Mr. Mike Willis. He is one of the board members for the South Texas Manufacturers Association, along of course with Mr. Victor Perez, our Executive Director, and Board Member Mariolisco. Oh, I'm sorry. And then of course, Mr. Matamoros and Mr. Ray Perez here, board members also for the EDC. Oh, and then Stephanie. I'm sorry, we're just in another meeting and Stephanie's here again. And Stephanie, awesome. Okay, so I wanted to go ahead and let you guys know that with this proclamation, what we do is that we try to aim to bring awareness to the importance of the manufacturing industry and the many career opportunities that the industry brings. Many people just assume that manufacturing is pretty much just factory work and machinery, but in reality, there are several occupations and components involved, especially regarding design and the improvement of existing products. And so it is with this collaboration that we have with these individuals that we are able to promote our existing manufacturing business community and provide them with a highly skilled workforce, which allows us to market the city of FAR as a destination city for future expansions in manufacturing. We would like to acknowledge the partnerships with our local educational institutions and organizations such of course as PSJA ISD and the South Texas Manufacturers Association, which allow us to continue in striving to support the growing and innovative industry such as manufacturing. I do want to hand it over to Mr. Mike Willis so he can talk a little bit more on the manufacturing industry and the impact it has in our region.
Thank you, Karina, and thank y'all for having us. Well, I'm with the South Texas Manufacturers Association. We're a regional association. We have over a hundred and fifteen manufacturing companies in our organization. Some are Maquilas, but almost all have manufacturing sites, our distribution centers on this side of the river, and probably three-fourths of our members are, their plants are located on the U.S. side of the river. I think everyone is well familiar with the Maquila industry and the significant impact it has on the economy of the valley, of course, the FAR bridge and revenues that generates. There's about a hundred and thirty thousand people working in the manufacturing industry right across the river in Reynosa. We have about fifteen thousand people working in manufacturing in the valley. We're not the biggest sector. It's about three to four percent of the economy, but the average weekly wages in manufacturing are almost eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars a week in the valley. That's all jobs combined. So it does have, it has a significant impact. Probably three-quarters of the manufacturers in the valley, between a half and three-quarters, are actually component manufacturers who make parts for the Maquila industry. That work is much more capital intensive. You know, the real high labor stuff is going to go to Mexico where the labor costs are lower. So on this side of the river, we have a lot of higher tech jobs. As Karina said, within any manufacturing operation, you have engineering, sales, marketing, customer service, distribution, production, quality, and all of that. There's many different sectors. It's not just putting stuff together. FAR also, blessed with the FAR bridge, also has a significant number of distribution centers all clustered around the bridge for a lot of these Maquilas. So I don't, I think I'm preaching to the choir when I talk about the benefit to the city of FAR. But we've had a really good partnership with FAR Economic Development Corporation and with PSJA School District. For the last five years, we've been recognizing National Manufacturing Day and we call it, designate Manufacturing Month with a lot of activities. STC is a really good partner. They have a manufacturing institute. We've got an Advanced Manufacturing Technologies Associate Degree Program that is in eight school districts in Hidalgo and Starr Counties with over two-hundred students enrolled. And PSJA is one of our, one of their biggest partners. So we appreciate y'all recognizing us with this proclamation. The goal of Manufacturing Day is really to raise awareness. Manufacturing by nature, we don't typically deal with the community and sell stuff directly. So a lot of manufacturers historically have kind of hidden inside their plants. And now that we can't find workers, the industries, the last ten years have started realizing, well, no one wants to work in manufacturing. One reason is they don't even know who we are and they think all the jobs are gone. So Texas has over nine-hundred thousand people working in manufacturing, three times more people than who work in the energy sector, by the way, in the energy industry. So we appreciate the opportunity y'all are giving us and we thank you for doing the proclamation.
Thank you, Mike.
We just want to thank you for being our partners for five years and we do a lot with the EDC and the awareness. We want our students to know that it's not like the old days. These manufacturing companies have a lot of benefits and there's always a lot of work. They get certified and they already have a job. So thank you so much for the awareness.
Well, thank you all for partnering up with City of FAR. We really do greatly appreciate that. Whereas for generations, manufacturing has played a critical role in Texas' diverse economy. Texas is home of approximately seventeen thousand five hundred manufacturing firms, eighty of which are located in Hidalgo County. And whereas manufacturing in Texas constitutes thirteen-point-three percent of the total output in the state totaling approximately two-hundred-and-forty-seven billion dollars in exports and manufactured goods in two thousand and eighteen. And whereas manufacturers in Texas employ seven-point-one percent of the workforce, an estimated nine-hundred-and-ten thousand manufacturing employees, including seven-thousand-five-hundred in Hidalgo County. And whereas manufacturing in Reynosa, Mexico provides for over twenty-three billion U.S. dollars of goods crossed through the FAR International Bridge comprising seventy-six percent of the value of the total trade. And whereas manufacturing jobs enable Texas families to realize their dreams of owning a home, sending a child to college, and enjoying a secure retirement, and manufacturers pay millions of dollars annually, supporting schools, law enforcement, emergency preparedness, public works, and other essential services. And whereas Manufacturing Day is an annual national event executed at the local level supported by thousands of manufacturers as they host students, teachers, parents, job seekers, and other local community members at open houses. Plant tours and presentation designed to showcase modern manufacturing technology and careers. And whereas National Manufacturing Day is held annually on the first Friday in October and the month of October is annually celebrated as National Manufacturing Month. And whereas residents are encouraged to support the work of manufacturing companies by purchasing products manufactured in Hidalgo County and in the United States of America. Now therefore, I, Bobby Carrillo, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of FAR, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor and the city commission, do hereby proclaim October fourth, two thousand and nineteen, as Manufacturing Day. A witness whereof, I have unto, set my hand and cause the seal of the City of FAR to be affixed on this nineteenth day of September, two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item three, public testimony. Do we have anyone that has registered?
Yes, sir. We have Pedro Garcia from FAR Community Theater.
Mr. Garcia, how are you, sir?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Pedro Garcia, interim CEO and artistic director for FAR Community Theater Company. And on behalf of the theater company and our board of directors, I would like to thank the City of FAR for its continued support as our company is an entertainment company. It is, so for city, for the people to come in and enjoy seeing our plays and also to be a part of our community in auditioning and getting cast and in being part of our crew. So we had a successful year, two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. And I have a fact sheet here that I'll leave with each one of you. And also, we just finished Bird Brains and we just finished Miguel Hidalgo el Insurrepto. On October first and October second, we'll be having additions for our Christmas play, Tejano Christmas Carol, in its fourth year now. It's been very successful, very liked, and we have twenty roles available in case anybody here wants to try out for a part. Find us on Facebook under FAR Community Theater Company. We finished scriptwriting workshops and acting workshops for youth and adults and we have additions, I believe I mentioned that, October first and second for the Tejano Christmas Carol. I have a fact sheet here that I'll leave. And lastly, I was very pleased yesterday, I received a phone call from UTRGV Associate Professor, Dr. Marcy McMahan, to announce to us that our play, The Tragic Corrido de Romeo...
Garcia, your time is up. I'm sorry.
In loop, okay, yeah. So in other, in other words, thank you so much, everybody. Come see us at the FAR Community Theater Company.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Hilda, do we have anybody else? All right, moving on to item four, public hearing. We do have a public hearing for the solicitation of comments from the general public on two thousand and nineteen Edward Burns Memorial Justice Grant. Did anybody, nobody signed up? Okay. Moving on to item five A, City Manager's Report, the submission of sales tax collection report for September two thousand and nineteen. The sales tax activity for the City of FAR as of month, as of the month of September two thousand and nineteen, has shown an overall positive trend in amount of two million eight-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, thirty-three dollars from this point last year, or an increase of fifteen-point-four percent, fifteen-point-four, forty percent increase. Moving on to item five B, submission of tax collection report for August two thousand and nineteen. Current tax collections as of August two thousand and nineteen are eighteen million three-hundred, three-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars, or ninety-five-point-seven-five percent collected out of this year's levy. This is a point-one-three decrease compared to last year. Moving on to item five C, is city events. The FAR Economic Development Corporation and the Greater FAR Chamber of Commerce will be hosting the second annual FAR International Trucking Expo on Saturday, September twenty-first. The workshop begins at eight A.M. and expo at ten A.M. This free event is open to the public and engages members of the trucking and transportation industry to network with one another and discuss areas of shared interest. Please join us as we also celebrate the FAR First Responders Festival with a free community festival featuring live music, raffle prizes, carnival rides, fire prevention tips, family games, free school supplies, and more. This event will be on Saturdays, September twenty-eighth in downtown FAR. If y'all have any questions, we do have our staff here to answer any, in regards to events or the finance. Moving on to item six A, Consent Agenda. Moving on to item six, Consent Agenda.
Move to approve. Second.
We got a first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to item seven A, Consideration Action of Any on Ordinance Adopting Tax Rate for Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Nineteen to in two thousand and twenty. Adoption, this is an adoption on the first reading. As y'all know, per Texas Local Tax Code, Chapter twenty-six, cities need to officially make a motion to adopt a tax each fiscal year. The proposed tax rate is point-seven-one-seven-six. I'm recommending that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of tax rate of point-seven-one-seven-six, which is effective, effectively an eleven percent increase in the tax rate. This, these monies will allow us to take on additional debt to help us improve our infrastructure in the city. This does require a record vote.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay, let's go. You have to read.
Oh, and to read it, okay. The move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of point-seven-one-seven-six, which is effectively an eleven percent increase in the tax rate. That's second.
Need to read it. Need to read it.
Oh. I...
Okay. We have to... Be second, all right? Second, we got a second. Any discussion? At this time?
I just would like to make a clarification before the vote for the benefit of our citizens. Main reason why the tax rate needs to be increased in our city, it has to do, as the city manager mentioned, infrastructure. In the last couple of years, the city was affected, heavily impacted by two floods, one more than the other, but either way, they were catastrophic. And if those events happen again, we are not going to be able to resolve them, just like the first two times. In order to resolve that issue, it's going to take the whole city to be involved. That means heavy investment, up to forty million dollars are needed in order to construct enough drainage capacity to prevent catastrophic, catastrophic events like the ones we had two years ago and, and last year. So that is the main reason why this is necessary at this time. Thank you.
I just want to also clarify what Commissioner Juárez said and make it, you know, the people, taxpayers realize this is, tax rate is specifically for infrastructure improvements in the city of FAR.
That's correct. If we don't raise the taxes, it'll, we will not be able to address the infrastructure needs that we have.
And just another understanding, once we address these issues and as soon as we see that we can take the tax rate back down, we will. The reason why we're doing this is like, I'd just like to interject on my fellow commissioners and the city manager said, it's because it's something that's really needed. We do need it in our community. And once again, it's just everybody pitching in and taking care of FAR, as I'm sure everybody will, wants, wants to, just as I do, make FAR the best city here in the Rio Grande Valley.
And also, if I may, just, just to give you an idea, the impact, you know, the average household in the valley of a house in FAR is roughly about eighty-eight thousand, the impact to that homeowner would be about forty-eight dollars a year. So, you know, less than a Netflix account. People spend more on Hot Cheetos than they do in this. So the impact should not be that great.
Can I have, make some comment?
Yeah, go right ahead. We're in discussion.
No, but I'd like to add, here are our companions. The increase of taxes is because, as we've seen in many areas in the city of FAR, it's flooded. We know there is infrastructure, a bank that passed through the river, but nonetheless, that's not enough to solve all the problems of flooding. With this increase, we would be almost guaranteed, if there comes an flood of water, of course, the city could sustain itself and not provoke damage to houses. This week, I spoke to a man in the factory that cost him ten thousand dollars to buy his house after the first inundation we had. He said that forty-eight dollars a year is nothing compared to the ten thousand dollars he used to repair his house. Here comes the second rain and he returns to invest another five thousand dollars, let's say. So, and that's true, as Bobby said, many times... The manager of the city. Sorry. He, he... We spent more on a glass of soda. A glass of soda, it's two dollars, it's twenty ounces, and we drank many in a day or two, right? And that's what you're going to pay for having your house protected from flooding and protecting your neighbors. Many times, your house isn't flooded, but your neighbors are. And that's not just solidarity among all the people in the city of FAR that helps us and teaches us unity among all the damaged and the un damaged. By the time the mortgage is paid, this increase in taxes will return.
Yes. Our focus is to enhance the quality of life, and we need to pull together as a community to be one, to help each other out and to work together so that we can take care of this. This is something that, that the City of FAR needs. This is what our citizens need. And it's just us as a community coming together and helping each other out and giving each other a hand so that we can have a quality life, so that we don't have to go back and reinvest, and reinvest every time it rains, that, you know, to fix your home and just to repair it so that the next flood can, can come back and hit us. So together as a community, together as one, we're pulling together. So like Commissioner Chavez said, it's not only the South FAR area, it's, it's everywhere. There are homes mid-FAR that get flooded, so we do need this infrastructure, and we do need your support, you know, with that, so that we can help each other out. We thank you for, for being our citizens and being part of our community, and together we're gonna, we're gonna make this work for everyone.
Not too long ago, somebody told me that we're gonna go up in taxes, and why did we return money to the people, and now we're gonna raise taxes? And if you live here in FAR, you know that some of you got taxes, I know some of the employees don't, don't live in FAR, but some of you got, got money back, a check, in fact, two checks. But that didn't make any difference, as far as what we returned was something that we had in surplus. It doesn't make any difference as far as what we're doing today. What, what we're gonna have to do is get funding to do all these projects, and if we don't have a certain amount of income, we cannot go out and get the money that we need to do the infrastructure projects. So it's, it's necessary that we go up in taxes at this point. It's just like you and your home. If you're not making so much income and you want to buy a Cadillac, and the payment is two thousand a month, and you don't make two thousand a month, they're not gonna give you the car, they're not gonna give you the loan, the same thing happening to us. We have to go out and rate, on the rates to be able to borrow the money that we need to borrow, and we need your help. And like, like Bobby said, once we get to a point where we can lower the taxes, we are gonna lower the taxes. So rest assured that that is gonna happen, that it's, it's gonna be a point where we will lower taxes again. Thank you.
At this time, we could take a vote, I think we, you each have to-
Roll call?
Roll call for the vote.
Commissioner Elizalde Juarez?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero?
Yes.
Mayor Portem, Bobby Carrillo?
Yes, four.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina?
Yes.
And Commissioner Isa Flores?
Yes.
Unanimous on the, for the increase in our tax rate.
Okay. Well, moving on to item seven B, Consideration in Action of Any on Ordinance Adopting and Approving Budget for Year Beginning October first, 2019, Ending September thirtieth, 2020. As part of the Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 102, cities are required to prepare and adopt an annual budget to cover for proposed expenditures for the succeeding year. The budget is in your packet, if you all have any questions, our finance director is here, but staff does recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Second, but I-
Okay, we have first and second to open up for discussion, go ahead.
Alex, I had made a comment to you, and one of the things is that I would like for us to discuss with, with all departments, their requests that they had, and then, and then for you to discuss with us your final decision as to what the budget ended up being. I want to make sure that, that if the Fire Department or the Police Department requested so many employees or so much equipment or whatever it is that they requested, that we know what they requested and what the final budget was. Because we, I, I as a commissioner want to be able to know their needs. It might be that, that, that we're not gonna approve it, or you didn't approve it. It might be that we agree with you, or it might be that we do not agree with you. But at least, I would like to know what it was, the final product, what was the final product as far as the budget is concerned, and what it was that the, that the department directors want for the departments. And, and at least so that we have the knowledge of what's going on and what, what we're proving today.
Yes, sir.
And if we could have a budget, a workshop later, I know that we're finalizing the budget today, it can always be amended, but at least we can have some input from everybody.
We'll be glad to share that information with you. We did have the workshop, which was intended for, for that reason, but we'll be glad to share that information with you.
And I want it in writing, Alex.
Of course, you'll get it in writing. We can, you know, we still would like to have the budget approved, but we will present you that information.
And if any amendments need to be done, we can do it.
Do it later, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Moving on to item seven C, Consideration in Action of Any on Ordinance Adopting Adverse, Adverse Incident Pay Policy. The City of FAR has created this policy to establish a special compensation provision for the impact period of an adverse incident. This incident is such as hurricane flooding, we would pay these employees a time and a half during this event.
Move for approval.
Second.
We got a first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Item seven D, Consideration in Action of Any on Ordinance Repealing Ordinances O-2011-27 and O-2011-52 Renaming Newcomb Avenue to its original street name, Park Avenue. We're gonna revert the Newcomb, which is right adjacent to the city, to City Hall, to the original street name of Park Avenue, and staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
We got any discussion? We got a first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Item seven E, Consideration in Action of Any on Ordinance Repealing Ordinances O-2011-27 and O-2011-52 Renaming Newcomb Avenue to its original street name, Park Avenue. We're gonna revert the Newcomb, which is right adjacent to the city, to City Hall, to the original street name of Park Avenue, and staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
We got any discussion? We got a first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Item seven E, Consideration in Action of Any on Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number O-2018-37. This is regarding the rental of city facilities, and this is a second reading, and staff does recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
We got a first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Item seven F, Consideration in Action of Any on Resolution for Nomination of Candidates to the Hidalgo County Appraisal District Board of Directors for 2020-2021. We are recommending Albert Cardenas, who is our current appointee, to that board. Staff recommends approval.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight A, Consideration in Action of Any on Approving a Budget for the FAR Economic Development Corporation Two for Fiscal Year 2019-2020, and the FAR EDC Board just approved this budget, or, yeah, the budget. Staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
We got a first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Item eight B, Consideration, Consideration in Action of Any Approving Budget for the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number One for the Fiscal Year 2019-2020, staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
We got a first and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Item eight C, Consideration in Action of Any on Approving Budget for the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Two for Fiscal Year 2019-2020. Staff recommends approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
We got a first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Just one question, is everybody on the commission right now on that tax increment board?
No.
Because I know not everybody's gonna be on the other one either, so only certain people can vote on those items, right?
You have to be approved.
Okay, okay, just wanted to make sure, I don't want to get messed up later.
Moving on to item eight D, Consideration in Action of Any on Approving Budget for FAR Housing Finance Corporation for Fiscal Year 2019-2020, and staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
We got a first and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight E, Consideration in Action of Any on Approving Budget for FAR Housing Finance Corporation, which is Jackson Place Apartments, for Fiscal Year 2019-2020. Staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
We got a first and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Item eight F, Consideration in Action of Any on Authorizing Caxcan, S.A. de Civil and Canadero Civiles to Conduct Field Studies and Conceptual Plan Cost Estimate for Bridge Expansion Project Twin Bridge Second Span in Mexico. This is, well, we do have our bridge director here, but this is to do a study to, to help with the expansion of the bridge. We are doing the study on the Mexican side first, but we're gonna do it in conjunction with the study on the US side, and subject to legal approval, we are recommending that this be approved.
Move for approval.
Second.
We got a first and second and a third and a fourth, real quick, that was good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Item eight G, Consideration in Action of Any on Change Order Number One for Las Mielpas Road Left Turn Lane Construction Project. This change order is thirty-seven thousand dollars, three hundred forty-eight dollars, and staff recommends approval to this change order.
Move for approval.
First and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Item eight H, Consideration in Action of Any Rejecting SO Bid for the FAR Port of Entry Northbound Lanes Expansion and Second BSIF Exit and Authorize City Manager to Re-Advertise for Bids. On June twenty-seventh, 2019, the City of FAR received one bid for the FAR Port of Entry Northbound Lanes Expansion and Second BSIF Exit Project. The SO bid was deemed non-responsive and was disqualified due to not meeting the requirements of the bid solicitation. Staff recommending that we, we reject the SO bid and re-advertise for bids.
Move to reject.
Second.
We got a first and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Item nine A, Consideration in Action of Any on Agreement Between FAR Public Safety Communications and the Texas Department of Public Safety for the Texas Law Enforcement Telecommunication Systems. This agreement will allow FAR Public Safety Communications to have its own TLET services. Staff recommends approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
We got a first and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Item nine B, Consideration in Action of Any on Agreement Between the City of FAR and FAR Community Theater, as we just heard from Mr. Garcia, our partner in this endeavor. The yearly agreement with the FAR Community Theater for this cultural program is thirty-five thousand dollars, and staff recommends approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
We got a first and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item nine C, Consideration in Action of Any on Renewal of Product License Agreement with Nearmap US Inc. for High Resolution Aerial Imaging. The cost of this is ten thousand dollars, and staff recommends approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
We got a first and second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item nine D, Consideration in Action of Any on Authorizing City Man, City Manager to Enter into a Contract with Tyler Technologies for Subscription Services for the My Civic Three-One-One Mobile Application. This app will allow us to identify, let's say, potholes throughout the city. It'll be an app that's available to the entire community, and staff is recommending approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
We got a first and second, any discussion?
And it's not just potholes, by the way, and so-
Yeah, it's all, it's gonna be all type of, probably going out to the community, you know, dead animals on the side of the road, anything that's out there that the community can come and call direct, and we can try to address the issues. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, motion carries.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you all for coming, it's awesome.